All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any comments, questions, additions or deletions to the agenda? If you don't, I do. All right, well, I need a motion to amend and approve the agenda to include an executive session to discuss the town manager's contract.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Review of the minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the February 28th, 22, 2022 regular meeting minutes and informational hearing minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now we're entered the board reorganization portion of this meeting. Your duty is to elect a chair.
I move to nominate Judy Fraser for chair. Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Judy, I'll hand over the meeting to you, I believe.
All right. That was easy. Okay, is there a motion to elect vice chair? I move to nominate Bennigan. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, appoint Board of Water Commissioners. Is there a motion to appoint the select board as the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint the Board of Sewer Commissioners with the select board being?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. A motion to adopt regular meeting schedule. Is there any discussion or?
That's for this board, right?
Yes.
Right, yep.
Anyone feel okay with moving it up a little bit, like to five? Or is that impossible with work schedules?
I think six makes it easier just for people who are working, want to attend the meetings.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we, we want to keep it the second and fourth Monday?
Second and fourth Mondays barring holidays.
Okay.
So is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting schedule as is? Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Designation, location for posting notices. Is there any discussion or change that anybody wants to see or just call where we are? Where we post all our notices? Okay. Remain as is? Is there a motion to that fact?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Designate a newspaper of record. Is there any discussion? I know you had added something in the packet.
Yeah, last minute I added a request from the Brandon Reporter to be the designated newspaper of record. Historically, we've used Rutland Herald, as you may know.
We did use the Reporter for one year and the issue was the weekly publication schedule meant that many times we would have to post in both the Herald and the Reporter. The Herald to get it out in a timely fashion, the Reporter because that was our paper of record. So I'm just going to throw that out there.
I'll stay with the Rutland Herald.
Anybody have any other comments?
Is Brandon a lot cheaper?
I don't think I saw a price on your proposal there.
I think it's fairly close, but.
I, of course, I didn't do a posting for, but like just interviews and stuff. It's extremely expensive to publish with the Rutland Herald.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I thought they had just more reader base, you know. What happened to the press releases? They used to be free, they're not free anymore?
Not as long as I've been around.
No.
Who paid?
We're going way back, they were.
We used to be with Brandon.
Yeah, we did it a year, yes.
You were with them. I mean, the he read shows to us to have the Herald in.
No.
Yeah, I understand the Herald is going up in price.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, their deadlines are a little longer than they used to be as well, I believe. And usually on average, if I've got to do a public notice, it's between 110 and 150.
So again, I don't have a problem with the Reporter, but I don't want to do it twice if we, if they can't publish in the time that we need to do it. That's what Stan told us the last time.
But now the Herald will be published a Saturday.
Well, that's.
They don't only publish Mondays, so it's not the same as it was prior. At that point, they were publishing every day.
Yeah.
Well, the newspaper in Brandon, we have to subscribe to that? Readers have to subscribe to it or no?
Subscribe to both of them.
There is a charge.
No, I mean, the citizens of Proctor have to subscribe to it or they're not going to be notified if you go with just Brandon.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people that don't subscribe to the Herald.
True, but typically, don't you think they would think of the Herald first before they would think of a newspaper out of Brandon?
Well, I think if we make it known that that's where we report and they want to find out anything, I think it's more like logistics, making sure it's posted so, you know, to keep within the realms of things. But I also think if we make it known that that's our paper of choice, that people want to find out about Proctor, that's where they'd go to see anything.
Well, I think anybody interested is going to go to the website, you know.
Or to the library or Town Clerk's office.
And we receive the, they support and bring free papers to us and Reporter's also on board.
It's not the only place that polygoneses are posted either.
Right. And you can grab a paper wherever, you know, like you said, other locations and stuff, so. Is there a motion to go with Brandon? For?
Yes, they did ask.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yeah, I'd like to, I oppose it.
Okay, all right, motion carries. Okay, adoption of select board rules and policies. Any discussion?
No, I think we've been through that and fine tuned it a little bit over the, over the years.
Even this year we did.
Yeah.
So I move to adopt the select board rules and policies as written from last year.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, appointments. Zoning Administrator.
I was hoping Keith Arland would get back with me. I'm not sure if you know him or not, but I think he was the town manager for Brandon for a little while and was doing a lot of zoning duties around the region. I met him at a town manager launch and he was showing interest and I mailed him his zoning administrator, oh, I mailed him the job description, I mailed him his zoning regulations. He said he'd get back to me today, but, you know, he didn't. So I'm hoping by the next planning commission, I'll have an answer.
Sure.
Is there a list for the next?
Yeah, until then, I can continue as the interim zoning administrator.
Okay.
What was his name again, Michael?
Keith Arland.
Arland?
Arland.
Okay. Planning Commission.
Our chair resigned. We will, I assume, be appointing one, you know, choosing one at our next meeting.
Okay.
And we're, that leaves us short one member, so we'll probably be looking for one.
Okay. All right. So you should, you should have that by the next meeting, right?
Yes, our meeting is moved back as a town meeting and a couple other things.
All right.
Yes, it's next week.
Recreation Committee.
Well, you had an application submitted today for the opportunity to serve as a member on the Planning Commission. Or, partially recommended.
Partially recommended.
Amanda Duchaine, she's not on the issue?
I don't believe so. Oh, Angela's here. No, she's not, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Everybody got this right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. 92 South Street.
I told her I'd get that for tomorrow with your experience.
Okay.
She didn't have anything to add.
Any objections, Judy?
No, I have no objection. Does anyone else?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Constable.
Judy, Chair on the Recreation Committee.
It was, it's been Megan, so, yeah. I think they would probably maybe like reelect once they got more people on board. Just, you know, I mean, I don't think she'd remain if like a lot of people joined, then we, they could revamp it and see if anybody else would rather be Chair. Constable, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, you've got an application from Donald Russell to be reappointed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Throughed. Emergency Management Chair. So this was the one that was Kevin Blonge?
Yeah, and Kevin's father passed away, so he's been dealing with that and out of town, so he did not oppose or agree to continue in this role.
So, and you haven't had any other interest, right?
Mm-hmm.
So do you want to put on hold till the next? I don't want to just appoint him if he doesn't.
That's okay, and I'm also serving, I'm also the representative on the Regional Emergency Management Committee now, and he serves as my, as the second representative, so.
Okay.
So emergency management's covered.
Right. So is he the Chair of, okay, so you're, you manage it and he's your Chair?
I am the Emergency Management Director and he is the Emergency Management Coordinator, so he serves under my direction.
Okay, all right. Well, if no one else has shown interest, I just, I would rather table it until he decides if he wants.
What's that college name?
Kevin Blonge.
I think he'll probably do it, but.
I'm sure he will.
Yeah.
I'm sure he'll accept that.
Follow the procedure. Okay. Tree Warden.
Well, I asked before, do we really need one?
Yeah, I think it's required by the, that we have one.
It's one of the appointed positions.
And I did some reading of, you know, many low cap, many towns just have the select ward serve as the tree warden, so.
There you go, guys.
Well, what about John Gorless, would that be a better choice?
He said, he said he wouldn't be opposed to the idea of it.
Okay. I nominate John Gorless.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's not a lot of time consumed, is it?
It's a big raise, so.
I think a lot of it just has to do with making sure your notices are in, you know, because you've got to follow the 15-day public hearing and whether John's doing or anybody else is doing it, I imagine I'd probably pick off that load, so we'll be.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Rutland County Solid Waste District Representative. We have an application from Carrie. Carrie Covey. Is there a motion to appoint her as representative?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Carrie, we would like to see you once in a while.
Sure, do you want me to come in or do you just want to report?
It depends, I would say if there's.
Send a report like every couple months?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Only if there's a hot topic or something.
Pretty much.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, price change, we would, you know, maybe you could zoom in.
Oh, there are a few app, job openings over there too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a, there's a couple new jobs sitting up there and we're currently revamping some ordinances that have been changed for a long time, so that's very fun.
Fun.
And we are also on the family feud.
That's awesome.
And I'm Jeanne Catherine.
Really?
Yes.
The real family feud?
For real, and a paramount, so we're going to give you a kiss as value.
Cool.
It's not every day you can get people to take it, you can move yourself.
But sometime it's worth it, though. Pay that ticket price. Well, thank you. All right, is there any alternative representative for the Rutland County Solid Waste District?
Hasn't that been John in the past?
Yeah, John Gorless was.
It usually is your highway person because they usually have the trash responsibility, so.
We're just loading John right up, aren't we?
Well, John also did a lot of stuff with the tree warden because the tree warden was my husband's, a lot of times they worked together, so a lot of times, John, it's not unusual for the highway person to get the tree report or to see the trees.
So we might as well load his plate up a little bit.
Yeah, let's give it to John.
We can ask him if he doesn't. Is there a second to appoint John?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
See what happens when you don't come to meetings?
Yeah.
We'll learn him.
Yeah, that'll teach you.
Well, I currently miss a solid waste district meeting, so it'd be all right.
Well, I commend you because I served on that for a while and.
I love that.
Yeah, it was shortly.
I love that board.
Probably changed a little dynamic. Regional Ambulance Representative.
Joe Bernier.
Fireman, yep. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Oh, he's on there till 2024 anyway.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Okay, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Representative.
I think I've been acting as it, I'm sorry, the changing seasons are catching up with me already.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Carrie, if you want to take back over the main rep position. I mean, I really don't mind.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Now that COVID's over and, I mean, it's too much to zoom, that committee, how do you zoom that committee?
Yeah.
It's all a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
But if it's back in person, yes.
Okay, okay.
And you're going to remain on it as well?
I'll be the alternative, how about that? Cool.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Carrie as the representative?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to appoint Michael as the alternative representative?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Regional Transportation Council Representative.
Well, if nobody has any objection, I'd like to, so I can follow up on the.
Stay on it?
The bridge up here and some other stuff.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for a Regional Transportation Council Alternative Rep, which is John Gorless?
Were you still following that tack?
Yes.
I've been going to all those meetings and finding them really helpful, so probably can, I'll probably continue to go to them, so I don't mind picking that up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to approve Michael as the alternative?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 911 Coordinator.
Believe that was Josh, but I could be wrong.
That was Sylvia.
Oh.
911.
Uh, Joseph Burner.
Joseph Burner?
Joe Bernier.
With all the changes that are, we're told are coming, we need somebody on there that's going to stay in touch with us and keep us up to date here.
I can table it because it might not, well, I'm not going to table it, but it might be a good job for Kevin Blonge or Joshua, who's been pretty.
All right, why don't we move it to the next meeting so we can ask them? Thank you. Okay. All right. Where's the appointments? Any open public comment?
It's more than one.
Uh, yeah, and it was Angela.
No open public comment? No guests?
No guests.
Any good stuff?
Great job on the roads again.
Yes, yeah.
Think the girls going to the finals again was good stuff?
Yeah, they played a good game.
It was an awesome game. They definitely took us from Rutland, it was a hell of a game.
It was a very good game.
Yep.
Definitely worked, it was best game all season, I bet you.
There were a lot of great games up at the obvious championship.
Yeah, they were close.
A lot of clock news there yesterday.
Their three pointer, I tell you.
Yeah, I tell you.
All right.
Brady's coming back this year, right? Is that good news?
Oh, yes, I saw that. Go Tampa.
With this money, what's he?
I don't know.
Can you imagine being the guy who bought his last touchdown football?
Yeah. Just got devalued.
I think $5 million?
Yeah.
Now you can buy a second one.
Second to last.
I just wanted to remind everyone because there's a lot of people listening and I kind of want it in the minutes that dog licenses are coming due in April.
Yep.
So get your dog license, please.
All right. Highway Department, the plus two highway grants preparation.
I held a meeting with Brian Sanderson last week and the application has been partially submitted. There are two documents for you to sign that will execute the agreement fully. So pass those around, sign them, and I'll, I'll forward everything to Brian, who will forward everything to the state.
Okay, these two that you added to the packet, sign?
Uh, no, they should already be there and Judy's got it and I think you've got it. And I'm trying to be careful of writing copy where you aren't supposed to sign.
That's at the very back of the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that might be confusing because it, I've also got it under discussion, yeah, I've also got it under discussion and action items.
This is a contract.
All right, reported drainage issues at 56 North Street.
A resident called and reported a drainage issue. They reported that road debris could be causing drainage problems in what I'm calling the marble graveyard. Did it have another name or not?
Where is this?
Over by North Street.
Right before the bridge construction?
The old water shop.
Okay, yeah.
It's kind of a boggy area to begin with, so after meeting with one of the homeowner, homeowners, it was agreed that there's, there's no imminent threat to life or property and that there does not appear to be negative impacts to the area caused by the grief from the towns right away, and they agreed with that observation.
What was their complaint?
Mosquitoes get thrown around sometimes, so, but it didn't look like the characteristics of the land had changed due to any debris that came from the right of way. So it was, we went down there and skied downhill and looked fine.
So they're talking about not drainage out of their home, they're talking about drainage on the property itself?
Coming from the roadway behind their home, yeah, there are probably borders that one.
What was attached on the agenda page?
Okay, request to remove trees along the right of way at 53 Tower Road.
A resident requested to remove trees along.
Let me look at my agenda.
Oh. Um, yeah, so there was some question of whether these trees were on the road or not, and John and I looked, it's a pretty small right of way along Tower Road, so we think they're back up off it. I'm going to give them the thumbs up to cut them down unless you have any comments towards it.
The landowner to cut them?
The landowner, yeah. Yeah. He was willing to cut them down if they were on the right of way anyway. It's just, it's like four pine, four pine trees.
Yes.
If no one had, it had come up in the past is what he asked me, and he said that years ago, the, the tree warden at the time gave them permission to cut them down, but I don't, that's not really how it works, so. But they're off the right of way, so maybe that's how it works. Maybe that's why he gave them permission, because they were off the right of way.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Yeah, but the one we had on the table.
Is there a second? Is there a second to go into the Board of Water Commissioners? Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Any more things?
Going back to the O and M manual, and we, we're going to discuss a portion of this later in the meeting, but in response.
Yeah.
In response to the requests of the sewer evaluation, we had three deliverables and one was backflow prevention inspection, one was the source protection plan, and one was revisions to the O and M manual. We've submitted the backflow prevention inspections. We've, we've also received the source protection plan from Lincoln Applied Geology. We're going to review that and then forward it to the state, and the last thing we have to do is update the O and M RFP, which was planned back in 2019 and wasn't done, and now we're back at it now. Once that's done, we're back up to compliance. The important part of being in compliance is we can apply for loans.
Yeah. Just got lost in the shuffle.
Lost in the sauce.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
Uh, just before our big contract, we finished pretty much all of that. We've got some work in Chittman to do.
Those are the string crossing disconnections, right?
Right, and we've got, we still own property up there and a building, two buildings, I believe.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure. It's, it's definitely one of those projects I need to get into. I've just been putting it off now that things are kind of getting put together. I can delve into something a little more complicated and that's going to be it. And John's back and forth on whether he can do it or a contractor can do it, so it's a discussion I'm going to have to have with him.
Won't you, sometime when you have a minute, go up with John, he'll show you the buildings.
Oh, yeah.
There's a filtration plant and a water intake building up there.
He said last week he'd take me up there when the water, when the.
Yes.
When the ground looked a little bit better.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I thought it was a lake, but it's not.
No.
Okay. See, what, that's what I know about it. I'm going to find more, find out more, though.
Well, and that's our forest up there, we have quite a few acres.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Willow pump station?
Yeah, we had a pre-bid site visit today, went well. We had a few contractors here. We had a representative from A and E here, John Corliss was here, and, you know, we went up to the site and looked at, at everything, didn't see any, you know, major hurdles that we have to get over. I will say, and I only say this so that expectations are understood, is that the supply side of things is really backed up. So that was the first question the contractors had for us was, what if we can't do it this summer? And it was, it's all around supply. And, and A and E replied to that with, that's why we're getting it out early, so that we can kind of predict, maybe this thing will land late and fall. So we, our goal, we are pushing hard for this thing to happen this year, but if the, if the supply's not there, the supply's not there.
Yeah.
The town attorney submitted a right to easements, didn't see any problems there, and Tom Doty and I have spoken a little bit more about compensation regarding the, the property of the, the trees that he's gonna lose. I'll speak more towards that with him here, but I think we're getting closer, kind of having something prepared for you. I don't wanna come in and just say we're gonna do this and that, I'd like to have some cost estimates prepared. And, so I'm hoping March 28th or sometime in April as we approach the construction phase, Tom and I will have that worked out. That's all I have for the...
Did you have any conversations with the, about the wetlands in there?
They're coming Wednesday.
Wednesday.
To look there. And hopefully all the snow will be removed, and they'll have an idea. Still, it's not something that they're...
Really concerned about.
Concerned about, yeah.
Good.
And, and the contractors are upset that it's called the Willow Street Pump Station because there's no pump station being fixed, but that's okay.
We can rename it.
Yeah. Maybe, I don't know.
Willow Street Down Pump Station.
The Meadow?
Yeah, Styles Meadow Pump Station. We've got a firm answer from Champlain. They're getting the, the parts on the 19th, and they're gonna be here on the 24th and the 25th to make repairs. As of right now, the system's running nominally, but it is on backup parts.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewage Commissioners and back to the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, managers' report.
So, pretty straightforward, I'd submitted our annual MRGP along with our road inventory, our hydrologically connected road systems, is what this has to do with my report. I've been performing interim zoning administrator duties, which has been fulfilling, but I'm ready to pass the torch. I, I've learned a lot about the regulations, which is good, and, and, but I've, I've done probably about three, and, and they weren't, you know, the most complicated things on earth, but, and, you know, with the cost of supplies, I mean, I get that many this year anyway. I join the International City Managers Association. This is kind of, from what I've found, industry standard for most town and city managers to be a part of. It's just a kind of continuing education thing. VCDP grant application and public hearing. I've continued working with Zion growers in prep, in preparation of the Vermont Community Development Program Planning Grant. Zion will be here at our next meeting to present a Procter-specific business plan.
That's great.
Submitted final notes for local hazard mitigation plan. Final draft of the LHMP is 99.9% complete. The committee has a few small questions to answer, and we'll begin public notices and prep for final submission. Stephanie will be here to do all that too, so. Prepared draft of Public Works Work Plan for construction season. I put this together quickly, and I just wanna kind of put this out there. The importance of these, the priority of these projects, I did kind of in a quick and dirty fashion, I designated whether they're important and whether they were urgent. And to me, urgent is defined as life-threatening or threatening the property, so that's urgent. Is it important? Do we have to have it done before a grant needs to be submitted? Is it in the town plan? Is it something that the select board of the community has kind of laid in on for a while? Those are important things. So that's kind of how I divvied it up. John Corliss went over the work plan with me, agreed to it. He thinks it's within the realm of possibility of being able to complete this summer, and, and it's always important to recognize unknowns. So these are our goals, our SMART goals, our specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and time-bound. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to ask. Oh, and I will state, you don't get your packets in color, so the projects that we're doing this summer are in gray. Can you see that?
Yeah, you can see the gray.
Okay. Mine are in yellow.
Curb stops, patch tree, patch tree removal.
Yeah, and Celia's ready to send out, she's all in John about getting out there and doing it, because she's ready to send out shut-off notices. Because we can begin doing that now.
I kind of think the curb stops and the hydrants are kind of important, so.
Yes.
It's good that they're on here.
Curb stops are priority number one. We've got a tree on Patch Street that's gotta come down because it's over top of somebody's shed, and the town had cut half of it already, but then they left that other half. I don't know why, maybe because it looked dangerous, I'm not sure, but it needs to come down, so that one's important. And then the, the erosion that was happening along Park Street was scaring me.
Yeah.
Because they do all that work and then...
We'll have a sinkhole pretty soon if that doesn't, yeah.
So we're gonna watch that closely. John's already gone up there and put millings down.
Yeah.
The goal is to make sure that that shoulder is seeded and mulched properly so that you get that cover, and hopefully that'll stop happening.
Yeah.
And then we are gonna try to knock out a hydrant that we think is, is one of the lower hanging fruits, because the other ones we think are gonna be pretty big, expensive fixes. If we've got time, we'll try to go up to Maple and Oak and do that cross-connect.
Right.
But we still have that list of, that I presented to you when I, you know, a few months into getting here of, you know, hydrants and their priorities, so we know Patch Street is, is one that needs to be done, and we think that can be done. But it's still a four-inch line, so we might run into what we ran down, down on here on Reynolds.
Right.
Where we thought it would fix it, but it didn't, because...
Right.
But we're at least gonna get, we're at least gonna go to Patch, and we're gonna try to fix that.
I talked with Michael. I'd just hate to see the crew spend so much time mowing grass when we could be doing better things. You know, I don't mind them doing some of it, but with, they lose at least one day a week for mowing. Also, every week.
Yeah, and I thought about that a little bit. It'll, it'll definitely be a select board issue when the budget comes back up next season, it's something we can explore. I brought us right back down to baseline for FY23, you know, took away that kind of safety net that we were working with for a long time, so we know what our baseline is. So I'd say we operate under that, and just my opinion, kind of go with what you got. And Tom, I agree with you, it sucks to go have an open trench and then have to, oh, well, it's Thursday, we gotta mow grass today, and we gotta leave the trench open. It's not something you really wanna get out of the flow of things, so that would be my opinion to maybe revisit that when we get to budgeting for FY23 and so forth, and make a decision on it, or FY24. All right, oh, I'm still going. I'll try to speed things up here. A quick one, vulnerable population communication protocol, there's a, there's a new vulnerable population outreach protocol that's been added to our local emergency management plan, and I'll work with Kevin Blonge and Stephanie Burke and Joshua Webb in the coming weeks to, to flesh that out a little bit more. And also, side note, our local emergency management plan, LEMP, is due in May, so I've got a meet, I've got a workshop, this is my first one, so I've got a workshop in the next couple of weeks. I said May in here, but it's really in March. So in two weeks, I'll have my LEMP workshop, and then Kevin Blonge and I will work together or submit our LEMP. And then Mortimer Proctor presentations, I was proud of our performance at the Mortimer Proctor presentations. They were good questions regarding the items, the items that were requested, and the war letter should be in the mail soon. And then Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District updates. If you're interested, I've added the Otter Creek Watershed Agenda into your packets, and I don't have anything other than that to add unless our representatives would like to...
Yeah, no, there's a meeting Thursday night.
Thursday, then. We'll be going to that.
Yeah, we'll go to that.
And, uh, community breakfast at the Rink, Judy?
Yes, community breakfast at the Rink the Saturday before Easter, which is the ninth Friday.
Seventeen, so the tenth, seventeenth, ninth or tenth?
I had it written down at work, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's gonna be in the morning, and they were gonna do more activities, but because the school is doing egg hunt over here in the park for Easter, they didn't wanna conflict with that, so they felt a community breakfast would be something better the week before.
Or nine, nine to eleven, yes.
Thank you.
What was it?
Four, nine, nine to eleven.
Okay, I'll put it on the website too, so if you're interested in when that is, go to the Procter website, and I'm sure it will probably be on the Procter Facebook page too.
Right, yeah, I think it'll get out there once I get there.
All right, Madam Chair, that concludes my manager's report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, action items, review bills, everyone sign the bills? Do those. Sheriff's report, any comments or questions?
Do you have any idea where that burglary was?
No, I looked at that too, and I was wondering.
Yeah, just for information as to what area, you know, of town that was in.
Yeah, and I'll say, around 3:30 today, I got a call, we had, a semi truck went up Oak and, and took down some lines at the intersection of Oak and Maple. So we got the fire department there, we got the sheriff there, and John Corliss went and escorted them all, and GMP was there to take care of it.
That's good.
Yeah.
Wow, you got bad directions.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was thinking, well, I saw it.
Was he ticketed?
I'm not sure if they ticketed it or not, I can look, hopefully it'll be in the report.
Yeah.
But, and speaking of GMP, we had a GMP truck that was parking along the right of way for a little while, and I got it taken care of too.
Yeah, good.
And it was fine, it was...
Yeah.
Went well.
Yeah. The station goes a long way.
It does. Yeah.
All right, let's see. Mutual aid agreement. Designated officials put on the pack.
I don't think there's any major updates.
Yeah, it's just a, an agreement, finally, that they've been working on this for two or three years, and it's just a, kind of a rate schedule and who, who has what equipment available, if somebody needs one in a, in an emergency situation. And we're not bound to go there, but the, the prices will be listed for different pieces of equipment and, and the man for, so.
Yeah, I went to quite a few meetings leading up to the one that you attended, Bruce, and there were, I think some people were tempted to make changes to it, but it ultimately didn't pass muster, so I think we're left with what, what has been.
Okay, Class II highway grant application certificates. I think everyone signed those.
Yep.
Good there. Facility use agreement for the high school, Easter egg hunt, everybody have that in their packet?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second? Second. On favor?
Aye. I, I realize it's a school, but I think it should be the same for everybody. They should have to put an insurance certificate in here. You know, we should treat everybody the same.
I agree.
Well, I think, I think it was raised before that we have...
It was.
Right, we have certificate of insurance on file.
Where is it?
I think the clerk's...
I don't see it.
No, but it's on file here.
Where?
But can we photocopy it?
Well, I think we should treat everybody the same.
Okay, well, I...
You started this.
Oh, I know, for outside vendors, when the school already has insurance and they're part of the town, that was the decision people made, that they have insurance, we know they have insurance.
It would feel better if we treated everybody the same.
Okay, so if she could just attach a copy?
Yeah.
I mean, it shouldn't be a huge problem.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to approve pending a certificate? Or do you wanna just approve it and we'll require the certificate of insurance gets attached to this?
Maybe we oughta have a, a copy.
It was the town that requested the insurance be on file here. That, that was a prior board and town manager that requested.
And I believe that the select board requested the insurance certificate be with every application. You know, I think we should treat everybody the same fifty times here, you know.
Let's...
We just signed an inclusion statement here, and we shouldn't differentiate between...
Let's approve it and get the certificate.
Mission four, I don't even know what that means.
So, I, I guess my, my thought on it is that we have no proof of insurance from all these outside vendors. We do have proof of insurance for the town school system. So if we were to provide that at the next meeting, would you be okay with just, anything that comes through regarding the school is satisfied, because you know we have the certificate of insurance on file?
I could keep a file of it in my manager's notes if that, that was a compromise.
Why can't we just, whenever someone fills us out, they could request a copy of the insurance binder, whatever it is, and attach it. Hi?
It's up to you guys, I don't know.
If it's, if they wanna show proof of insurance, if it says so, then let's show proof of insurance.
Yeah, I don't think it's that big a deal to attach it.
I'm sure all the secretaries have a copy in their filing cabinet, just run a copy of it when they fill the form out.
For everybody that wants one. So what would you like, a motion for that, or...
Yep, there's a motion, you guys wanna do that? Make a motion?
To clarify it.
Firstly, I, I do think it's an extra step, but it, I mean, if we have it on file in the building, it's a matter of just photocopying it safely. So I would move to approve this pending receipt, adding the certificate to the application, which I think we can do in HSH.
Yes, and I'll second that.
So going forward though, just to make sure we're covered, are you gonna require that with every event from the school? Or will you be satisfied once you see the certificate of insurance that it's covered from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2023?
You would still require it from outside vendors for them to show...
Well, they only get insurance because it's specific to the event.
Right.
Most outside vendors have, they're covered by insurance as a blanket insurance. When we have events, they only provide your certificate of insurance for that specific event, not showing they have insurance, that they're covered for that event only.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think they, it, it's just gonna make it simpler if everybody does the same, same thing.
So are you gonna want the school to make, get a special certificate of insurance?
No, no, no.
No, not a special one, but attach a copy of it.
Okay, and that's the difference.
Yes.
That's the difference. We require them because they're insured for their business, but when they're doing an event, it's something different, so they have to specifically say on their certificate of insurance that we're additionally insured, what the event is, and where it's being held, and what the dates are, and they're covered for that specific time, where I feel like the school is covered as a blanket.
Does a school certificate specifically indemnify us? I'll bet it doesn't.
I'd have to see it.
Yeah, I'll bet it doesn't.
I would bet that it does, just like the...
Do you think we're stated on there?
Well, that's the only reason you would have a copy of it down at the bottom, just like the town has to get the library one for town clerk.
If you say, if you say it's on there.
Well, I mean, it's simple enough, I mean, I'll, I'll follow up with Celia tomorrow. If it doesn't say that, I'll make sure that it says that after.
So if we had a copy of it, we'd know, right?
Well, we've been operating this entire time, and Celia has a copy of it downstairs, so I guess you have to have faith and confidence in your town clerk, and I do.
I do, I do, but I think as number 51, we should treat everybody the same.
Michael, do you think you could get a copy of it and have... Michael, do you think you could get a copy of it and have it scanned and emailed to us all tomorrow?
I can definitely do that. Thank you.
So does that mean that every time that there's a birthday party at the rink, there should be a facility use agreement? Because then you just, there was a rule a year ago that they didn't need to do that because that doesn't get done. So if it happens across the board, then it has to be across the board.
No, they do a facility use agreement if it's an outside vendor at the rink.
Yes.
They do not do it every time. They do not.
Yeah, we have them because we approve them all.
Yes.
Good.
And we have a lot from the school too that we have approved.
The next time I see a birthday party there, I'm going to check and see if they fill out a facility use agreement because I can guarantee you it's not happening every time. And there was a discussion when I was on the board about this very thing. And then we no longer are going to do that and make the rec, we need to do that. So that's my.
I don't remember that at all.
If it's across the board, then it has to be across the board.
It is, and I don't remember that when I'm being on the rec committee that we let others have birthday parties and, so. Okay, so.
But I do think that if we're going to have a facilities use agreement form and it specifically asks for proof of insurance, all you need is a signatory page, you know, just the bottom of it or something for the school.
No, you need the certificate of insurance. You need the certificate of insurance.
What I mean is attach to the facilities use agreement thing for the school. Just why not everybody just put it with your application?
If they come in here to use one, we'll just attach one every time for the schools.
It just satisfies it and you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to have the, sort of, motion for the.
To approve the facilities use agreement pending adding their certificate.
Pending certificate of insurance, and then moving forward to have the certificate of insurance attached to any facility use agreement for the school.
That's not my motion.
No. But we need a motion.
Yeah, I just want to be clear about that.
So is there a motion to ask that the certificate of insurance for the school be attached to every facility use agreement that they submit?
Not just the school, Judy, but.
Everyone.
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 Oh, I know, we've already, we've established that with everyone. We're just talking about the school.
We thought we did, but we, now the school is.
Right, so this is for the school. So this is for the school.
I thought it was for everybody.
We have. We've already established we have for everybody, so I'm saying for the school.
The school is everybody.
Perhaps we don't need a motion specifying the school. We just accept this.
No.
Yes.
We've already established that every vendor requires a certificate of insurance for a event in the town.
You made sure of that, yes.
Yes, we did that.
Yes.
The school wasn't doing that, so now the motion has to be to include the school, just like every other vendor, to provide a certificate of insurance for every event that they hold in town.
So point of information. So what you're saying is if the school is holding an event on Friday, the 24th, we have to provide a certificate of insurance that says on Friday, the 24th, from 9:00 a.m. until midnight that we're giving you? That, that's what you're asking for? I mean, you have a certificate of insurance from the town, from the school.
Oh, I get it. I know that.
Those are two separate things. I don't think, oh, you all realize those are two separate things and that's what you're requiring?
I realize it's two separate things and I'm sure it would cost, the insurance agent would be, your insurance company would be charging for that.
I'm sure they would.
So I don't think that's necessary.
So that's what Judy's asking. She's asking if you're, if you're requiring.
I don't think you brought her, Judy.
Okay, forget it.
No, I, I think what I, what I'm asking is, I just wanted a motion to say that we want a certificate of insurance from the school every time we have an event.
Wait a minute.
An event or facilities use agreement.
Well, an event, using a facility use agreement for an event.
If they have an umbrella insurance, it covers them for having events.
Right.
Of course.
And it's on file downstairs.
Yes.
Can't we simply have them photocopy, or whoever submits the facilities use thing, photocopy that, attach it to the facilities use thing and put it in front of us?
That's what I.
That's.
That's what she asked.
That's what I said and asked for.
I mean, so I think if we, my opinion, we accept this contingent on getting that, okay? And then just remind them that they're like everybody else. They need to, maybe just if they have a copy in their office, just send it with this. Whoever fills out the facilities use agreement, just send it.
Well, we'll just let the, the office know that when one of these is filled out, a certificate of insurance has to be with it. If we have it on file, we can photocopy it.
I mean, if, if they are required insurance, why are they required a facilities use agreement?
Well, I think they are required for, to have insurance and we, we're aware of that.
It just comes down to, they just have to show, whoever fills out the form has to show that it's backed by insurance.
Okay, so is there a motion to that?
Tom, make a motion.
No, I'm not going to make a motion to that because they should have been doing it all along. You know, when we, when you were pushing for people to have insurance, you didn't specifically state the school's exempt. It was for everyone to show proof of insurance, to cover the town.
Okay, so how do you want to move forward this? If you don't want to make a motion to say that it's going to be asked of every, when the school has an event, to provide us with that?
Just remind them that.
Yeah, reject it next time.
I know, but I'm saying we have to have, let's have a motion so going forward we can tell them this is, this is what we're requiring.
Maybe I could just stop by the office tomorrow and let them know that. That, that might be easier than getting a motion tonight.
Okay, but going forward, they should know.
They know.
Okay, so, okay, so the next time one comes through without it?
It won't.
Okay.
I'm sure. So there's a motion on the, the floor to approve this pending their receipt of their insurance.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution for VCDP Grant Application Authority.
You can treat this as new business because I don't need this signed until I officially apply for the planning grant. And Zion Growers will be here next week, but for full transparency, this is it. You can sign it now if you'd like. That's fine. It just gives me authority to kind of move forward and apply. So the town is going to apply, but we have till April 12th to pull the court, so.
We've got time. Let's hear from Zion before we.
My thought, I think that's a good decision.
Okay, O and M Manual, RFP.
So for this, we just, if we want to move forward with it, we need a motion, like I said. It was dropped back in 2019. It is a requirement. DeBois and King wrote our O and M manual. So the, their last edits were in 2017, 2018. You, you all have probably seen this book. It's pretty big. And John and I did work with DeBois and King to try to delineate tasks of what, who can do what. It really, the, the end of that conversation was the town of Proctor can do a few of those tasks in about two seconds. But the majority of them are very complicated engineering tasks, which they can also do in about two seconds. So, so you might as well just kind of, you know, to keep things simple, just give them that full workload.
Yeah. Stan was after this even when he was here, so.
If we've got to do it, we got to do it.
Yeah.
Get it done.
So you need a motion, Michael?
Yes.
Is there a motion to move forward on this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else up for discussion? Nobody on, mine has anything?
Nope, I can see anything.
All right. Is there a motion to enter into executive session under provision of VSA titled Section 313A to review the town manager's contract for renewal? There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.